Public hearing this evening, November 26, 2012, 5:30 PM, in the city council chambers here at City Hall. The hearing is being held to discuss the government electric aggregation, opt-out program, and plan of operations for the governance of the City of Belleville. It's officially called an order, and I think it would be approved this time if we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll proceed. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people whom I stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will allow public participation, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Philip Carr, who is the representative from Good Energy, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to ask him to come forward first of all. He's handled a number of these programs, these public hearings and procedures with other cities, so I'm going to ask him to start us off tonight. And it's not to say that you still won't have questions, but he may answer some of your questions in some of his opening remarks. So Philip, if you come forward first, and then we will open up questions from the audience.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, I always have a wait.
That probably does short-cord.
Yeah, that's all right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and how are things in council? Thank you for inviting us in. So, yeah, I'll just give you a little update on where we're at and head off any questions that I've been getting today, actually. Phones have been ringing all day today. It's like last week was very quiet and everything happened at once. So I just wanted to be quite clear about where we're at. First off, congratulations on approving the referendum. That was significant achievement. There was a large outreach campaign to local media particularly, and so I think that had a big impact on the overall result. Now, Belleville will be going out to bid with altogether 208,000 households. So we started with about 250. Unfortunately, some failed. Sinclair Candy failed by risker, and a couple of others. But the vast majority, over 80%, did get approved, which Belleville has won. Good news is that the electricity wholesale markets are very low. They're not likely to move in the next two weeks, so we expect to have a very good bid. We expect the pricing to come at a very good price. The prime focus of this program is to save people money. That is what this is all about. Bottom line, there's no other agenda, there's no other angle, there's no other anything. It's about saving residents money. Okay? So the bid date is on December 11. There are three locations in the central and southern light. The metro areas, communities, and some close by will be meeting in Granite City. There will be a meeting place in Charleston, and also in Decatur. Now, very important to understand that we, as a consultant, we present you with a series of options. Okay? So let me just dispel what I've met that I've been hearing today, which is that you guys have to go green. You do not have to go green, okay? You can do whatever you want. We will present you with options. What option will be, essentially, you get the same power you have at the moment, traditional power, we call it. We don't call it ground power because it's all ground power. It's traditional power. It's the state requires a renewable portfolio standard that you already have in your electric supply, which is about 60-7%. Okay? So you will, you can continue getting what you get at the moment. One. Two, we'll probably put it out for a 50% renewable and 100% renewable option as well. To give you an idea of what that means from a price point of view, last time, the 100% renewable option was 4.08 cents per kilowatt hour, and the traditional option was 4.01 cents per kilowatt hour, which equates to about 80 cents a month for household work. Okay? So a household rate, the household, you know, might be spending about $7 a year more compared with the renewable option under those circumstances. Within the context of savings of about $100 to $200. So that's a decision you need to think about ahead of the bid date. Are you going to go green? Are you going to stick with traditional? Or are you going to go something in between? It's one decision. I would like to just emphasize the fact that there is a price match guarantee built into the bid, so if whatever reason, Ameren's rates will reset maybe in June next year, and we do not know what it will reset at. We'll get the indication ahead of time, but you will be signing a contract that goes through that period. So we have what we call insurance. It's a price match guarantee, which means that essentially, if at any stage, you do it for 36 months' term, if at any stage in the duration of the contract, Ameren's rates should drop below the rates that you have in your contracted term with the new supplier, the winning supplier has to match Ameren's new low rate, or everybody can go back to utility at no cost. This, I think another important thing to understand is there's two aspects to a successful program. One is price, one is operational excellence. Okay? They are equally important. It's no good having a great price if your supplier can't deliver on servicing 14,000, 15,000, 16,000, 17,000 accounts, 200,000 accounts. Okay? So much as we'd love to put this out to bid with every single supplier in the state of Illinois, who tells us all, not a good idea. Okay? This goes out to bid with the suppliers who can handle this kind of business. Okay? So that these are, it's going to go out to definitely five, possibly six power suppliers. These are the largest power companies in the country. These are power suppliers who have experience of handling your kind of accounts. Okay?
It's the lowest, most responsible.
It's the lowest, absolutely right, sorry. It's the lowest, most responsible bidder. And that's just a brief overview, so please ask all and every question you have. This is a great time to do it, and I'll move to you.
So we'll open it up from the audience first, and then Alderman, if you have some What we're doing tonight, just real quickly, for 30 seconds here, we're going to have two back-to-back public sessions. And at 6:30, the council does have before them, in a special meeting, has designated two resolutions on the, right? I believe we have two resolutions. It's pretty simple, but, and this is all in the direction of the boat that we took several weeks ago, and we followed just what the other cities had done, the same time, the same setup. Listen, we called Philip and said, "What are they doing? How are they doing this?" So we'll open it up to anyone in the public, first of all. If anyone has a specific question that hasn't already been answered, and maybe some of them have, you know, any particular questions. I think the one thing we haven't decided yet, but I think from conversations, most cities are taking a two-year, right?
Mayor, it seems that, there seems to be a consensus, it's between 17 months and two years. So we're going to bid this out 12, 17, 24, 36 months.
Okay.
17 months, the logic being that the group you're going out to bid now would actually be coterminous with the first group of 200,000 households that went out to bid and made this year.
Okay, I follow that.
So, but at the end of the day...
And that decision, Philip, won't be made until the bids come in?
It's good to have a sense of where you are strategically on that, but what's, on bid day, in practice, it suddenly becomes obvious which way to go.
Well, I think staff and some of us who have talked here with your conversation have, were kind of pretty comfortable about the two-year commitment, but if the majority of them feel like there's, for that reasoning you just gave, the 17-month, I think we're open for, you know, some suggestion there. But other than that, I think we agree that three's pretty far out there, but one is hardly worth it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that answers about the length of this first contract. Questions? Any of you have any questions at all? Alderman, do you have any questions? Anybody have any specific questions? We'll start with, okay, we'll start with Billy, then we'll move up this way across.
Um, speaking. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this going to cost the city anything, or do we pay any fees for this, or do we have to pay any administration fees?
No. This was stated several times, but in case you didn't catch it, there's no fees to us. This is...
Well, when I read the paper, it wasn't clear. It didn't say for sure, and it didn't say yes. I was just wondering, so once we get the bids, and they're all approved, and we approve the bids, this is whoever goes and gets them. After that, it doesn't cost us anything.
That's right. There's no cost yourself. Any costs are maybe attorney's fees in, you know, being present at meetings or overlooking contracts. I don't know what the rest is.
And our attorney's going to do that. He's on a salary, and there's no cost for that.
Right. And that's my, I have a few seconds. Well, for the day, there are no hard, but directly, there's no hard and fast fees in any shape or form. That's part of our role, is to, like, we paid for all the ongoing costs. Our goal is to take all your rest off the table. So from a free point of view, there's nothing for you to pay for.
One more question, because I hope I told this person right. Yesterday I was asked, she got a phone call from Green, something Green Energy or something, and they were signing them up. And I said, "You don't have to sign up, it's through the city." So evidently, this is not the same.
No.
Right.
There's a number of individual groups out there right now who've been out there, and we really can't stop them. It's America. However, the group that the city has selected is Spelch Group, and what we've tried to explain, and the news media's done a pretty good job, the reason we believe this is the right group is because of the magnitude of purchase power. When this many, when this many cities come together, we're going to get a better deal than any of these other places. We firmly believe that.
But they do it over the phone, and she said she agreed to it, and I said, "Oh, no, Pat, you should not have done that. That's not the same thing we have." She said, "Well, they said they would send contracts." So I guess my advice to her would be, that is not the same as what the city's...
Right, right.
And I should, so, thank you for bringing that up, actually. It's a good point, because what I would say is anybody who's thinking about, you know, locking into some other contract right now, well, let's be quite clear, Good Energy does not make phone calls or send ratings. So nothing that's going out now is from the city or from us, this new program, cannot be, is not. Okay? And anybody who is receiving phone calls right now and sees that the city's doing something might be confused. The way this is going to work is after the bid is decided on December 11, the winning supplier is going to send out what's called an opt-out letter. If you do nothing, you're going to get enrolled, nothing. So the key thing is automatic enrollment. That's very important. So there will be an opt-out window of about 19 days, so it'll take about 10 days for the mail, for the main sticker. Each of those letters will have the City of Belleville written on it. Last time we did logos, logos actually didn't work out great, but these in some ways are the regulations of logos. So we just bring the City of Belleville written on the envelope. This will come from the winning supplier, and the residents that do not want to be enrolled must send back a postcode or a report, whatever it is, to send the letter. And the letter will state the savings that exist. So that's the level that you should look out for. It'll say that, it'll have the City marking on it.
The City of Belleville will be on it.
It'll say the City of Belleville on it. And right now, there's no way any firm with a mail offer or a phone-in offer could have a better price than we're bringing yet. But it's just not, it's not mathematically possible.
Well, I, that's what I thought, but I didn't, I could have been wrong when I said, "No, it's not ours."
Right.
You know, but I said, "I don't think so, because if you will get an opt-out letter, you will automatically be enrolled."
You'll automatically be enrolled. And just so you get an idea, normal opt-out levels are between 3 and 7% opt-out. And a lot of those people opt out, do it by mistake, and we'll get them back in the program. If they call out, like, "Oh, I didn't realize, I thought I was opting out of the opt-out, the opt-out." Don't worry. Because what you're actually doing is you're opting out of a new program, which is kind of a jiddle, right? Because you're going to be enrolled in the new program, so you're opting out of the new program if you want to get out. So if people opt out by mistake, we'll get them in. If all people want to get into this program, instead of even wanting to get out of it. I've literally, of course, one person in our last group, who just so ideologically hated the idea of saving money, they wanted to get out of the program after losing the opt-out window.
Oliver Carruth.
I have a question about the renewable energy credits. Which, are they called carbon credits? Is that...
Well, they're called renewable energy certificates.
Uh, if, say we would go with the green option, and we would accumulate carbon credits, can we sell those on the market to corporations? Is that correct?
Right. Uh, yeah, it's slightly of a concret, renewable energy certificates, what that means is, I have a slight disclaimer here, I'm not a company to renewable energy expert, okay? We have someone dedicated to that. But I do understand the concept. Renewable energy certificates are issued, are issueable by wind farms, so, or whatever it is. And essentially, can be used to offset the power that comes, uh, for example, at the moment, if, you're still going to get your power at the same lines, okay? It's not this, you're not going to have access to a wind farm in Texas, it's not the same grid. So in a way to create a market, a wind farm in Texas can issue certificates, a renewable energy certificate. If you purchase a certain amount of those certificates, and what is called bundled into your electric usage, the government says that that can constitute that your community or your household is now using 100% green power. So someone, somewhere has made the calculation, a certain amount of renewable energy certificates issued by a renewable energy provider, when purchased, are deemed to offset your power, and that's when you're considered being 100% green. That's the way the market works. You can become a green community and be recognized as such. For example, the City of Aurora, which we helped last night pass their referendum, they decided to go 100% renewable, and now they're one of the largest renewable energy communities in the country. The City of Chicago, I saw them just today in the paper, they, I have to be careful, St. Chicago, but they are seriously looking at going 100% green. So it's something that, last time, the breakdown was 25% of our communities went with the traditional option, and around 75% went with the renewable, 100% renewable option. So it's, like I said, consultants, we just present options.
Okay, I think Linda was next.
You talked about lowest, most responsible bidder.
Yes, ma'am.
Are your, is your company the one who determines that? And what is the criteria for a responsible bidder?
Oh, that's a good question. Okay, so we have a whole load of criteria when it comes to responsible bidders. We're not, so we're not putting this out to a bidder. We can't handle them, okay? But it's fairly self-selecting from the point of view that there are not many companies that can do this business. You know, to be able to, forget 200,000, just try and transition maybe 16,000 households on this, because you'd start at 20,000, maybe 2,000 always switched to another 2,000, you know, I don't know. But say 16,000 households in Belleville, there are not many companies that can handle that kind of business, moving the accounts across efficiently in a timely manner, servicing those accounts. So the main criteria currently is, is operational capacity, and there's really only a few, there's only a few companies in the country.
Okay, operational capacity as far as...
As far as handling, handling this amount of...
Okay, administratively, then more than...
Yeah, yeah. I'm taking it as a given that they've got to be able to do the power, really. And that's a given.
Okay.
Yeah. So they wouldn't be in business otherwise, but what we're looking at is can they actually deliver operationally? Because, yeah.
Okay, so we've talked about a lot of options, as far as green, renewable, not necessarily renewable, months. So at what point are those decisions made?
I mean, just to purpose of the mayor, we'll say about decision-making processes. I mean, decisions, the term length of what to go for often becomes apparent in the room on the day when you see the prices. So you give a sense, I'm going to go 17 or 24, and then you see the price, and go, "Just enough right now, I'm going to go for this price." No, but it just jumps out at you. When it comes to green, that's more something that, from my experience, is generally decided ahead of time in some shape or form.
And I guess the question would be, because we're certainly, we've had conversations with staff about the green, but do you anticipate that the cost will be significantly different?
No. I think the cost is, the spread will be very, very small.
So with that, with that in mind, to me, it seems like we would want to go ahead and go green. And that's what a lot of, you're saying at the end of the night, Aurora and many cities are making that choice.
A lot of cities are doing exactly that.
So I would think that it's been the nature of this council, with the commitment we've made to cool cities and other things we've done, that we would follow that, you know, just being recognized a couple of weeks ago in with energy. I think that we would probably want to do that, long as it wasn't something that was going to significantly hurt our customers, our citizens, on a cost thing. So I would think we'd want to go green, and I think what he's saying is, the date that we're going to go to, it's Granite City now, we're going to open the bid, what date is that again?
December 11.
December 11. Now, what I would suggest, and we still have time until Thursday, that based on tonight's public hearings, after we pass the resolutions at the city council meeting, that while it's not on the agenda particularly, but I would suggest that we might have a brief discussion on agreeing to give me the authorization at that meeting to lock in either the 17-month or the two-year, based on what the majority of the group does, and to consider going green, unless at that given moment, that day, that would pan out to be not the best experience for all of us. But I think those are the two biggest decisions, right, Philip?
Yes, sir.
And we could make, we could formally put that in action, though, on December 3 by the council. We can time it.
Okay. I'm a little confused about the three locations. The exact same thing will be happening in each location. You're just making it easier for whoever represents which municipality.
Exactly.
Okay, and so then what happens then? Basically, they're going to present it with a grid, this company can give you this rate for this many months, and this company can give you this rate for this many months?
Exactly.
And so does everyone present have to make the same decision?
No.
So what we decide for Belleville might be different than what another municipality decides.
You can go 12, traditional, they can go 36, green. You can go 36, green, then go to the middle. You can do whatever you want. It's what we call informal integration. We just, either way, you can get twice the impact. The other thing is, you know, one supplier, you can't choose a different supplier. That would be one way to supply. So, but you can choose your term length, and you can choose your product as you see that.
Mr. Turner, Mr. Hay.
If everything goes as anticipated, how quickly do you see our citizens having a difference on their bills?
Uh, so first bills will start, I mean, first, the reduced rate of power will start coming through in January, February. So on meter read, so say from mid-January through over 34-day period, on meter read, mainly meter a day, redate, you'll flip over. So your first bills will start coming through in February through the March. But you'll enjoy the benefits, thank you, Jamie.
All right. Thank you. First question goes back to Mr. Nader, I'm still unclear, Your Honor. It was stated in B and D that we have not decided if we would charge administrative fees, and I want to... No, I think we stated in the B and D that we made that decision, we told Lori Browning, and she, I think included in her editorial, that it was the administration's, unless the council would overturn that, it was our desire that we not charge administrative fees. And that would be fees for our staff and things like that. It has nothing to do with that, correct? Right, but I think we talked about that, right, Philip?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, exactly. We talked about that.
And Jamie and I, the last conversation we had, we agreed that we weren't going to pursue that. It was our recommendation.
But that, I'm sorry, but that's the way I took it in the paper when I read it from Mr. Turner.
That there was going to be administrative fees?
No, no, would be none.
Would be none.
Would be none.
Right, and that was because at the time, she wanted to know when she did her editorial before they endorsed it, was there going to be fees? And what we said that day was, it was the mayor's and the staff's recommendation that we not seek out fees, because we just felt that that was, you know, the whole purpose was trying to save the customers, the taxpayers. And it's not going to be a significant problem for us. Once we get this thing up and running, it's really not a real issue for us, right?
Right, Mayor. And what certainly happens is, from a work point of view, is when the opt-out letters go out, so you're also going to get phone calls. There's no way around it. Pass them on to us straight away. We've got the infrastructure, we've got the call center, but they're still going to call you. It's going to happen. So just pass them on to us. That will quieten down after about three weeks. Then, quite frankly, it's, that'll be the odd account, the odd inquiry. Just every time you get emails, fully on to us, we deal with it.
If I could, if I could pause it a second. For those ladies who just came in, if you sit tight, we're going to start a duplicate of this meeting, so you'll get it from the whole beginning at 6 o'clock, and we'll kind of wrap this session up here sharply, and then we'll start over, so you're not missing anything, okay? Let me catch up, I want to make that.
I know, I, but, I'm good.
Next question. It's stated in the, also in the B and D that we have to rank a point two representatives. Who makes those appointments and how do they confirm? And do we have two people, or do you have to be online?
Well, I was, Mrs. Fields and I were going to go, and it was just simply because they have to have an authorized signature to sign that day, and the clerk also files all this stuff, so as it was tentatively planned, unless that would be changed for some reason, we signed almost all legal documents on behalf of the city. So it was probably planning to be her and I to go. Okay?
Next question was raised to me by several citizens. There's a concern that if we go through this process, which is good for the citizens to save money, their concern is that they're going to be paying less, which means that they'll be paying less on their utility tax, and therefore the city may raise their utility tax. And my understanding is, one, we wouldn't be able to do that because we're at our maximum 5% anyway.
We're at our maximum 5%, so it can't be raised anymore. Jamie and I calculated that and looked at that, and that was one of the first risks that things we took, looked at. But after it was all said and done, we believe that it's not going to be really a factor, virtually very little of a factor, and we didn't get all shook up about that. Had we thought it was going to be dramatic, then we would have probably been back here talking about the administration fees to set off some of that. Now, I guess it could be that if we learn from this, that it is, then the next time we enter into a new contract, we might have to say, "Look, it's been real good for all of us as citizens, but it's hurt the city. We might have to introduce the administrative fee at that time." But because there's so many unknowns, and because we've never experienced this, it's our belief that we should operate on the first 17-month contract or whatever we agree on, and just try it through and see exactly what it, what it hands out.
And encourage people with the savings and shop Belleville.
Exactly. Another question, Philip, that was raised to me. Obviously, going green is a good thing, but with the traditional energy sources, question was raised to me, if we go green, does that put any impact on not using coal that is produced and manufactured in Southern Illinois, which is basically, provides jobs in our community?
Yeah, that's a great question, and so I wish my renewable energy guy was here. We've been asked this before. My understanding is that it does not, but for a thorough answer, I'll get in the court so he can give you some detail on that. Okay? I don't want to just bluff, but it's an important question.
Yes, yes. Next, next question, Your Honor. In this plan's purpose of municipal opt-out aggregation, it says for residents and small businesses, does that mean large businesses are not allowed, or what's the...
Unfortunately, yeah. It's the way the law's written, it's only up to 15,000 kilowatt hours annually for small businesses, and that's very similar, it's like a daily or, I mean, it's unfortunate. and that's very small, it's like a daily, or, I mean, it's unfortunate.
And that's said by state statute.
That's said by, there's no, there's no...
We don't, we don't have any wiggle room on that, though. Because if they, if they wanna know, they're gonna have to take a look at their bill, and contact them, and see if they're within that average, that they can legally consider them. But it's far very small, I don't know what word, very, but maybe very small businesses. A lot of them, just because of the state statute, don't qualify.
On the background, on our power agency, exit of, let's see, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, just curious, in addition to passing required ordinances, et cetera, it still does states, the city will file any application to comply with any other rules, regulations that may be required by the law for certification. What kind of things have come up in the past that would force us to have to adopt new ordinances to comply with this?
Here, I'll pray shortly.
Says in addition to passing required ordinances by corporate authorities, the city may also be required to comply with various rules and regulations established by authorized agencies of the state of Illinois. The city will promptly file any application to comply with any applicable rules and regulations that may be required by the law for certification.
What, what's that taken from?
Basically, the fifth paragraph down.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's from the plan, right?
The, 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 the point of the question is, what, what kind of surprises could be out there as far as change in regulations?
I think anyone's saying is, is what, what, one of my jobs as a consultant is essentially to, you know, be abreast of all the, I mean, we're, you know, we're tied with the ICC, we're, we're, you know, we, our job is to keep abreast of all implications appearing as a program of the state of the city, so, so we will keep you briefed on everything that, you know, needs to be done, and, and also complementing that, there's this amazing brainshare attorneys, quite frankly, and we've got some feeling experience attorneys working in different cities, and, you know, it's, it's all about just keeping abreast of, I, I can't predict what, what may, what may arise.
On the, on the opt-out steps overview, recipients will have at least nineteen days from the date of post-mark, basically, to opt out, but where did the nineteen days come from?
Well, it was fifteen days last time, I mean, opt-outs is, is generally between ten and fourteen days, so, we made nineteen, it's, it's sort of Christmas holiday period, a little bit of time, so.
And then, let's say I'm a citizen, and I, I don't opt out, and the city goes with the seventeen-month agreement, but six months from now, for whatever reason, I want out.
Yeah.
I can still get out?
You can get out, I mean, technically, you'll be charged a twenty-five dollar early termination fee. And the reason, the reason for that is, is, if we don't charge an early termination fee, we don't charge it, the winning supplier to provide a bit, they get it obviously, then the price will be higher for everybody else. Well, our job as a consultant is to manage, is to get you the best rate at the lowest rate, okay? So, we put a price-match guarantee into the bid, that raises your rate slightly, okay? But that's a price worth paying. We put a twenty-five dollar early termination fee into the bid, that slightly lowers your rate a bit. We think that is worth thing, because there's no rational reason why someone would wanna get out of the program if it's much lower than all the other offers around them, unless they wanna go for one of these gift card offers from a different supplier. And the logic is, why should everybody in the city pay a higher rate for the tiny percentage of people who want to shop around? Because the rate is lower because of the...
And you gave your choice upfront right away, so...
Yeah, and, and also, you can get out of the front anyway, so, so, you know, and we've built a price-match guarantee, so that if the rate drops below, then, you know, the price match is there, so, an early termination fee really is, 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 uh, is something that helps you guys save, get a better rate whilst...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
So people will take advantage of the program.
The, the concern that was raised, to me, was, this is America, if I want out, I want out for whatever reason, it's a small, it's a small cost.
There's a small, and, and you know, it gives, it gives the suppliers a little bit of, the fact is, you know, there's a very small barrier to exit. But the reality is, given that the nature of the savings, it's, it's not gonna be something that I think is called on very often. Quite frankly, I'd be amazed if...
What if they move in six months?
If, if, what moves in six months?
They move, so they have to cancel.
Oh, you know, sorry, yeah, so, you know, there's that fee if you move.
That's, that's understood.
There's, there's no move, this, this is for people who, who, who are staying in the same address, and suddenly changed from the city's, you know, bid-weight supplier to another supplier without changing address, and they literally just shopped around, probably not paying a higher rate, because they just got some, some sort of...
And, and last question, Your Honor, I appreciate it, it was patient, so, under the termination of service clause, it's got various different things in there, but I really don't see anything referenced to the fact that, if, you, you stated earlier that, about the price match, and that they don't provide that price match to be hammered, that to me would be the, the number one reason to terminate the clause, but I don't see that language specifically in there with these other lists of termination clauses.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, the price match, and, and it's under the bidding methodology, it's sort of written in there that there is a price match. I haven't got the documents, trying to be, but I know there's a variety of...
But my, my point being, Your Honor, that, I don't, you know, I don't know where attorney's gonna be here.
He's gonna be here at six thirty, we can talk to him, okay?
You know, I think that language should be added to that termination clause.
Okay, so what we're gonna do now, if it's okay, you're about, bear with me, you'll be the first speaker. I'm gonna officially close this first public hearing, and if nobody's objecting, you're jumping up and down. I'll close the first one, and here in about ten seconds, we're gonna open a new one, and we'll formally start, and then we will let Phillip kinda, from what he's heard this time, recap it, and then, then we'll...